Hannah, we call the meeting's order. Are you ready? Would you mind taking role?
Right. Commissioners present in establishing a quorum. Commissioners Blair, Lewis, Bull, Dawkins, and Nugent.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have, we set aside three minutes. Any members of the public would like to, you know, wander up to the microphone and speak about any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. You're welcome to do that, or anyone in the Zoom room. Do you see anybody?
Any attendees in the waiting room? If you'd like to comment, feel free to raise your hand and I can give you speaking power.
We're at a slight disadvantage because we can't see the waiting room, but great. Like to say that we do appreciate having members of the public in person. Thank you very much. Next item is approval of minutes from the prior meeting. And if anyone has had a chance to review. Was there any edits?
I move to approve the minutes.
Thanks, Brandy. Do you have a second?
I can it.
It's very much Kelsey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Host. Okay. Motion passes five to zero, Hannah. Okay, next item up. New business. We've got some great things to talk about this evening. First item is Mr. Swanson. Always appreciate seeing you, Ben.
You too. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, great, great.
Excellent. I know last time I was yelling into my laptop, so I got headphones this time. Yeah, so, yeah, thanks for having me. I appreciate it. Kate wanted me to stop by and just talk a little bit about, I know we talked, we touched on the pros plan during our CFP update, but get into that a little bit more as well as the parks element in our comprehensive plan as part of the whole preparation process for our large comp plan amendment that's coming up. And so essentially what this, the PowerPoint that I'm using and it's, it's kind of a doctored version of it is the same PowerPoint that was used to present to both the planning commission back in January, February, and city council during the pros plan adoption. And so just to start off here, Hannah, would you mind pulling that PowerPoint up and running it for me? I blinks out my screen when I'm trying to do it.
Chairman Bull, while that's coming up, I did want to make sure it's on the record that Commissioner Lockhart did notify us that she wouldn't be absent this evening. She has a sick child.
Okay.
For the record.
Perfect. Thank you. And then we can just go ahead and jump into the next slide. So talking with Kate, I understand that you've been over this quite a few times. So just one more time as far as the overall process with our comp plan update. And I'm sure as you discussed, it's a, it's a, starts with the state under the Growth Management Act. And then from there, it's almost like the Russian doll where slowly one contained in the other, then it goes to our, our regional planning authority, which Puget Sound Regional Council, which adopted Vision 2050. And then from there, Stahomish County takes all of that information, develops their comp plan based off of it for the county. And then us down the road, we go ahead and develop our comp plan based on the criteria and goals and policies from those, the three before that. So this evening, what we're really going to focus on is the orange, the Parks and Rec element and the pros plan. And so with the Parks and Recreation element in the comp plan, you'll see it, it's not very many pages. It's actually pretty, pretty thin chapter. And that's by design. The body of the comp plan, we are really trying to, I know it's a, it's, you know, altogether, it's a pretty big document, but we're really trying to do is keep it highlights and at a, at a level where the members of the public can go through and peruse through. And then if they have additional interest, we have these other items that are adopted by reference in the appendix, appendices. And pros plan being one of them, you have the sewer plan, you have the water plan, you have the stormwater plan. This is where all the numbers and all the data lives. And so if somebody's very curious and wants us to go down to this level, we adopt that pretty unwieldy for, for people to read. And the pros plan, it's, it's a product of the overall plan itself, is a product of the comp plan, but it's also a product of the Recreation and Conservation Office. It's a Washington State office. And what they do is, much like Puget Sound Regional Council does for transportation, they are the funding source for our parks. And so the majority of the grants we get to develop our parks comes from Recreation and Conservation Office or RCO. And so, so RCO requires us to update our pros plan every six years. And unfortunately, that is not on the same timeline as the comp plan. There are a few documents and, and, and requirements of the, of the state that they've tried their best of the years to line those things up. It just doesn't line up. So we just kind of do our best with it. And you'll see coming up here. The good news is, is at least when we're developing the pros plan and adopting it, we were doing the new vision for Monroe. So we did have that input as we went through the process. If you go to the next slide, please, Hannah. And so, so again, pros plan similar to the comp plan. This mandate actually comes from RCO. And obviously they use the Growth Management Act as a basis for this, but our pros plan, just like the comp plan has to address our next 20 years of growth. And that's why when we did it early, you'll see in the pros plan and even in, even in the, the park element, you'll see some areas in there that are basically say, hold for the 2024 comp plan update. And so when that goes through the park board and the park board goes through and does its amendments, planning commission is the gatekeeper for everything, whether that's, you know, roads or housing or whatever. When all that comes through, then planning commission will look at that as the whole package. And that's for a couple of reasons is to ensure consistency with the goals and policies of the, the new goals and policies of the comp plan. And then the second thing is, we don't want anything to conflict with each other. And so if we're planning a new park somewhere and parks is planning a major arterial in that same area, that's what we want to avoid. And so that's why you'll see the, the planners are always the gatekeepers of the comp plan. Hence, everything funnels through planning commission when it goes to a recommendation for council. And so when, when we go to update this, this, what presumably chapter seven or just called the parks element, and we go to do those updates to the pros plan that were held off till 2024, the majority of that work will happen at the park board, and then the park board will develop its recommendation as a package will come through to the planning commission. And so, so with this, just like with the pros plan, it's a, it's a 20, 20 year view on the needs of the community. And if you go next slide, please, Hannah. And then, so like I said, this was developed right around the same time as, as the vision was. And so that spirit was very much included in the development of the pros plan. And so the equitable access, obviously being a, a very big one to the, to the mayor. And then also to the individuals that we surveyed, and we'll take a look at some of those surveys when we come up here. Next slide, please, Hannah. And so this was our overall planning process for the pros plan. Started back in, in 2020 and then wasn't adopted until February 2022. And so during this time, and again, I have some slides on it, there was a lot of outreach that took place and what the visioning process actually modeled their outreach process off this pros plan, which I can't take any credit for, that was actually Mig, our consultants that did a great job with that, but essentially created a new way for us to do outreach, which is really working out well. And so it started with inventory of existing uses, the assessment, which involved, again, a lot of outreach, some user groups, and then went into strategies and then the overall action plan. And then, next, please. And so with the planning process, much like the comp plan processes going through, we had our, our stakeholder groups, key leaders, interviews, the joint boards and commissions where park, park board and planning commission got together. You can see the snapshots of the surveys that were sent out in both Spanish and English. Then we, once that initial data was gathered, they did some prioritization workshops. And then, and then obviously National Night Out is a big one for anytime you're trying to reach the public. That's always a great, great venue. What's not listed here is they do, they did do a few other outreach events with the public, but the National Night Out is always, always a big one and always a good one for people to give comments and give feedback on. And as you can see, approximately 1,100 participants. Next slide, please. And then organization of the chapters starts with the standard introduction. And again, it looks at our existing assets, what we have. Then you go into the needs of what are we going to need in the next 20, 20 years? And that accounts for, you know, population increase, needs and desires of the community, and then especially focusing on any areas that were lacking resources. Vision and goals, just like the comp plan has, has vision and goals that go along with it. The pros plan building off of that also has its own visions and goals. And then finally, the chapter five with the implementation. Next slide, please. So we do have appendices of appendices. So this pros plan will be appendices to the comp plan. This, the pros plan itself also has the again, it has a lot of the numeric back there, but it does give you, if anybody cares to look, it gives you the questions that were asked during, during, for the questionnaire. The, all of our outreach is documented back in those chapters. Things like funding strategies that get a little more on the Excel spreadsheet side are also stuck back there. Next slide, please. Next slide. So this is the actual plan itself. And like I said, it, it took a look at existing, existing resources. And so this map, what you're seeing right now was actually the map out of our previous pros plan that we had the prior six years. Just identifying essentially our existing facilities. As you can see, even back then, the, the Cadman site, the Sky Comish River Park site that's hashed, that's hashed in, the green there has been on the city radar for a long time. We're still working on that right now through, working through negotiations with Cadman. We expect that hopefully to have transferred over to the city in the first quarter of this year. But you will see these legacy projects, the synthetic fields over at Lake Tye, that was on our capital facilities list for, I want to say maybe 10, 12 years before we found funding for it. And so it's important with these old documents to, to take a look at the previous inventory and then next slide, please. And then compare it to the needs of the residents today. And so here's just kind of a snapshot, I won't go through them of what they were, of, of what we focused on and feedback we received from that public outreach. And next slide, please. So just a sample question, and then how we received the city staff the data back when they, when they put that information out there. And so they tried to ask the questions in a, in a very positive way. The company that they actually sub consulted through did have consultants to ensure that the, the survey questions were accurate and double checked. So it tried not to give a balance to any side of an answer. Next slide, please. And then this one, this was, this was a more of a field to see is the, is the community interested in increasing our park system? And I'll get to a slide that'll, that'll show the numbers. And bottom line is, we're going to need to go out for a bond in order to do many of these improvements that the community wants. And so during this pros plan, we put that question out to the community on how, how would they feel? Obviously, going into that process is very expensive just to make the effort to, to go out for the bond. And so what the city wanted to do is just see if there was the, the feeling out there that the, the residents would support it. And next slide, please. And then this one gets into, to park access. And so the, the rule of thumb, and this is something that during my research, the CDC references, the federal transportation references it. And it's a essentially a, a, a 10 minute or a half mile walk within a park. And specifically, those are, you know, neighborhood parks in many cases. However, they can be larger, for instance, like Lake Tye. That's, that's the goal is to, is to get that. And that's what's considered walkable. And so that's the goal to get those within the, the areas. And so I know we discussed last time, the, the North Hill area as the area where they're, they're focusing money and resources to get a park up there. That's an area that was identified. You also see that North Kelsey property right now is currently commercial. However, there, there is, there isn't a park down there. And then you'll also see the blue asterisk on the map, one in the downtown, one in the Northwest UGA, and one in the Northeast UGA. And that's what I was, I was referencing when we go to do this comp plan update, we need to address those things at that time. And so this is something we'll tackle now. And what those, what those blue asterisks are, they're just generally in this area right now. We didn't know where the community would, would generally like those Northeast. Again, it's difficult to pinpoint, especially in the UGAs down to a specific land area. But, but this obviously need more discussion when we go through and do the entire comp plan update because it's more than just parks. We know we have to account for transportation. We have to count for housing and those kinds of things. And so we don't want it to not reference back and forth between the chapters if we do kind of shift to an area or look for a site. Next slide, please. And then trails. This is something that we'll probably be seeing more of. We're going to start next year as far as just a very specific trails plan. We went through in the pros plan and we did a good job, not a great job with analyzing our trail systems. And so what we have planned for next year is to actually get down and really start getting into details such as hiring a company to go through and analyze the surface of our trails. Number one, that's for existing conditions because since those trails have been put down, they've, are reaching or have reached the end of their lives. And so they're going to need to be resurfaced. There's a lot of push up from root systems that are, that are going underneath. And then ADA accessibility, we want to make sure that we still have that. And so that's part of it. Really looking at future trail connections, we have some general locations to the going towards Everett to connect in with that trail system, and then also going south to connect in with King County's trail system. But again, not a lot of real groundwork has been done on those. And so we are going to turn around, revisit that next year. Next, please. And then maintenance needs. So this is a big one that has been neglected from many of the plans that I've worked on, but I'm happy to see is in here. So it shows what, what is the ongoing cost of the ask? If we want a new park, you pay for that park, but that cost doesn't end there. And so what they did in this pros plan, which they haven't done before, is they went through and started analyzing what the maintenance responsibilities of the city is for these parks. And so as you can see, in 2008, we had 17.3 acres per full-time employee. And then in 2020, now we have 26.2 acres per full-time employee. And so our park system is growing, our responsibilities are growing. However, our staff isn't growing. And so that's where we get a lot of calls for, you know, hey, the trash is overflowing down here. And it's, it gets really hard, especially during the summer and you have event seasons because you really focus a lot of your maintenance staff, making the park of wherever the event's taking place, look very, very nice because you want those visitors and everyone that's coming down there to have a good experience. But then you have to sacrifice that time from another park. So the grass may be getting longer. Like I said, the trash may start overflowing. And so those are things that we've been working on. We've been working on with both the city administrator and the mayor. They recognize it. And so, so we, we did get two additional part-time summer help in our, our next two years for our budget, which helps us out a lot also. But we will be in the future, need to grow the department with additional maintenance staff to keep up on the parks. Next slide, please. And then go ahead. So just like with the, with the comp plan has a vision, the pros plan also has a vision. And so it's, again, it's the, it's, this document is subordinate to the overall comp plan. But in order to create that focus around specifically our, our parks and natural areas, they adopted a vision specific for this pros plan. And as you can see, there's many echoes of our current vision for the city in there. But there's the, there's the vision for you to take a look at. And then pros plan goals. So this is very much, very different from the comp plan is, is the quantity. It's, it's tailored down because we are dealing with very specific areas. And so these are more high level goals. When you look at our, our comp plan, I can remember chapter one or chapter two, you will see several goals and policies going through there. This one obviously is, is narrowed down to the well-studied parks, vibrant riverfront. That's something we've been working on for several years is trying to reconnect the city with the river. Outdoor recreation hub, park access, and then connectivity is another big one. Next slide, please. Next. So 20 year recommendation. They went through, like I said, the consultants walked all of our parks along with the park director at the time. I was not in the department at this time. And took a look at everything we have, what we need to start replacing, what we need to build new. So you can see all those dots. This is in the pros plan too, if you want to take a longer look at it. But over our 20 years, we're looking at roughly $94 million is what we need to do. Everything that we want to do in the pros plan. We don't have $94 million. We didn't have close to that. So two reasons why we put everything in there. One is if you don't put it in, you can't apply for grants for it. And then the, the second one is, is you need to get that list, that 20 year list. So the council has a choice to pick what priorities they would like to focus on. And so that gives them a laundry list to take a look at, based on their feedback from the community, what projects they would like to focus on when we get down into our six-year CIPs. And so a lot of that is the council does a strategic plan every year, and they identify their priorities. And so we take those priorities and then translate them down into our, our capital facilities plans. And so from the 20 year, the large document with everything in there, and then it scales down to a six-year. Like I said, there's a lot of, of grant dependent projects in here. Over these next couple of years, where we actually, you know, saved up and have the money. After that, you start getting out, especially with your larger parks, you know, you're talking, you know, five, eight million dollars to, to do these things. And so those will be grant dependent. And then a big chunk of this would be dependent on a bond. Next slide, please. And then, again, just from the outreach of going out to the community, you can see some of the funding priorities that came back from that. You know, some of these are a little more on the general side, but it's just kind of, you know, tailored down for a snapshot and then priority goals, the thing, the items that you just saw that were incorporated into the pros plan. Next slide, please. So you can see this is over our next six years. And if you see the, the, the color in purple, that indicates money that we don't have. And so you take all the way down there and you're looking at roughly $27 million is the, is the money we're looking at here. We are hoping, and this is, this is still being discussed at looking at potentially in, in 2024, maybe a little earlier than that, maybe a little later than that of going out to the, the voters with the bond and see if they would like to pass a bond. It's dependent on a lot of different things. When you go out for a bond, obviously you don't want to run against, run at the same time that the school district's going out for a bond or the fire department's going out for a bond. And so those things are dependent. And then and then you want to take a look at the economic times. If you, you know, obviously you go down during very slow economic times, people are going to be less likely to do that. So that's why we haven't absolutely set a date yet. And next slide, please. And then priorities, prioritization criteria. So this is something that that we took a look at, also brought in front of council when we're going through it, would, well, I should say council committee. And then took it to a workshop and then council as a whole of taking a look at the criteria and how to move forward on some of these proposed projects. And then you could see kind of this, especially on the right-hand side, I'm pointing the screen like you can see me. On the right-hand side, you can see what we're looking for, you know, top of the list, underserved, upper, upper represented groups, you know, safety and use. Those kind of, those kind of criteria go into, into rating it. And then next slide, please. Implementation. So looking at the, essentially six different areas here. The increased maintenance and assessed stewardship, that goes back to our, our current or our existing level of service versus the level of service we would like to be at. Number of full-time employees servicing the parks and those kinds of needs. The parks crew also empties the trashcans in the downtown area, which I know get, you know, full up pretty fast, especially during the summertime. And so just taking a look, a look at those things and what do the residents really want and where should we be putting our focus? North Hill Park was one of them. Grants is a huge one. We do it every single cycle. RCO, their big grant cycles are roughly every two years. We did not rate very well in our, our last grant cycle. And so we have another year and we'll be coming up on that. And then there's the number four, the bond I was just discussing. Master plan, the green belt. So what we're working on, and this is currently scheduled for 2024 is when we're planning on doing this, but doing a riverfront master plan. And so that would essentially tie in the Cadman parcel that will hopefully be under city's possession at that time all the way up to Borland Park and, and master plan that area. And then the coordinate trails and transportation. And so that, like I said, we're starting our, our trails plan next year. That's actually going to be done in coordination with Public Works because trails is a very loose term and Public Works maintains some areas that could be considered trails, specifically the, the very wide sidewalk going up Chain Lake. That's something that, that Public Works has. And then not to mention, we're really looking to get people from point A to point B. So sidewalks come into, into play sometimes when somebody wants to, you know, go on foot or, or even on bike and get to our trail systems. Next slide, please. That should be it. Any questions?
Andy.
That was very informative. Thank you. I did have we're talking about trying to get more money for the plan to be able to do more things that you have identified as priorities. On the implementation slide, it said for, it was like a circle wheel on number three. It said, apply for grants and approve new impact fees. What, can you tell me more what that means?
That's a great question. So the impact fees were already, were already updated. And so what a going back a little bit, so what an impact fee is, is we have parks impact fees and transportation impact fees and school district impact fees. And what those are, are, it's a, a tool that's, that the state allows local jurisdictions like counties and cities to impose on new development. And so if I come in and I want to build a new home in Monroe, my impact or my buy into the system, because the park system's already there and the school system's already there. So my buy into that system of what the existing tax base is already paid, that's your impact fee. And so for, for us here in the city, we actually did a fairly large increase. Our single-family impact fees were roughly, I kind of want to say $2,500. And we've raised those up to roughly $7,000 is what developer pays when they build a new home in the city Monroe. Those impact fees are what's called restricted funds, meaning they can't just be used for anything. We can't go buy a new police car with it. They're restricted funds and must be used on park capital improvements. They can't be, you can't hire employees with it. You can't do maintenance with it. It has to go towards building new facilities to accommodate that new growth. And that's where that impact fee goes towards. And so that one was already done. Was there a second part to your question, Commissioner Blair?
No, so that, that piece has kind of been checked off already. We did the increase for that.
Correct.
And what does that fund look like? I mean, does it have money in it?
I haven't seen it recently. It should be, we just did it in, at the beginning of this year is when it went through, maybe end of last year, beginning of this year. Is when that fee went through. Unfortunately, our housing started slowing about that time. And so so, yeah, I'd, I'd have to go back and look, but it's, yeah, it's, it's in our funds. The, yeah, the previous impact fee we The yeah, the previous impact fee we had. Again, so impact fees, the the way the 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 state dictates that is you can't charge a hundred percent of it on the developer of whatever the overall improvement is. But you can go up to and there's like a, I don't know, a court tested number that's like ninety six point two or I don't know. Anyway, there is a methodology that you go through. You can't charge the the developer a hundred percent of of the of the overall impact based on your future capital facilities. But a council can lower that. So you're just restricted by the max and a council can choose not to take it all together. And so what had happened before is the and it all depends on an economic cycle. So the previous time it was done in a a downturn of an economic cycle and I from my understanding is they were trying to get additional building in the city Monroe. And so it was a much lower impact fee. And so we just went through a six year period of of collecting less than than less than ideal on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? Ben, I have a question. Your little North Kelsey Park. Low walk to score. So but who was walking to that particular area? That's in anticipation of residents on North Kelsey.
Exactly, exactly. And so so that one we is, well, there's kind of, there's two things. I guess I should say two schools of thought with that is that it's wait on the residential units, which, you know, we are still working with Lowe's and there's their attorneys to work on the CCNRs. It's been going on for a long time now. And so just wait for that amendment to take place, get the developers to start building and move forward with the park. However, as you know, with our funding cycles and, you know, grants and those kind of things, it takes us a while. And so we could wait for the developers to come. They build it. You know, we wait, you know, it takes us a year or two to get out there, construct the parks and there's a delay. Or if an opportunity should arise, build the park early in anticipation of that development coming down. Also, it would be just a an area that's really void of any type of of park area to hopefully in 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 Chair Boy, you remember this from when we were talking about allowing residential uses down there. It's just there's no life down there, getting some foot bracket traffic down there. Some people kind of enjoying that area. And so, but you're right. It's it's one of those things that I don't think we've we've a hundred percent decided on. Obviously, there's a lot of needs going on right now. The downtown area, the festival lot, this identified in the downtown master plan's also up there too. And so I I don't know when that would be coming, but you're exactly right. It's based off that that projected population coming down there.
I do have another question. When the consultants, so the walkability that you talked about being a half a mile or a ten minute walk. And it sounded like that's a standard, that's like a like a federal standard or just a
It's an industry standard. And so you have, you have the National Parks and Recreation Office that usually develops the industry standards. And I was actually curious about that, that the same question you just asked a while ago. And so I started looking at it. And I don't know who originated that standard. But like I said, it is, it is referenced in the CDC. National Highway Safety, I wanted to say, is the ones that actually translated the half a mile into an average ten minute walk. As as far as they were looking for, what's the average time? And there were a couple other organizations that reference that. That doesn't mean that you have to go with that. That can be something where, hey, we only want people to walk a quarter of a mile to a park. And again, it's it's an industry standard. It's not a mandate, I guess is the best way to put it.
Right. Because I think since most of the parks already look like they are within that distance. But yet people on all of the surveys are saying that they want more access to parks and more parks. So then that must mean that in Monroe, we want a closer number of walkability, either minutes and quarter mile or whatever. How how do you go about changing that standard?
Well, I think it's, I think there's a, there's a little more detail in in that. It was a connectivity. And I know like right now we are not great with our bike lanes. As far as separating the the bikes from the the bikes from the road or or getting an established bike lane. That was part of one of the connectivity issues that we that we have is point A to point B where the individual riding feels safe. The other one again is is the trail systems that it didn't really get started until we got into the Frylands area, when the city really started pushing for a a trail system going through there. Developments before then didn't have any. And so we would be taking a look and I'd have to dive in, but I know there was a number of things around connect connectivity, not even just, it wasn't even necessarily related so much to proximity. But I would like to hop from this park to this park to this park. And I think that would be a fun day, but I really can't get there without getting in my car. And so there's, it's, it's, it's a little deeper than just the proximity part, I guess. It's the safety in getting there.
Well, that that leads into my other question, which is the safety of getting there. So consultants at all talk about if a person did want to walk to a park that was within their walking distance. If not a bike, but just walking. There's not actually sidewalks and a safe way to get to some of these parks that say that they are within walking distance.
Right.
On that at all in the, it does it, is that reflected in the pros plan?
It may be a little bit, but that's what we really hope to accomplish with the with the trails plan. Is that, and that's why Public Works is is going to be joining us on this plan. It's not just going to be a parks thing. Because some of our connectivity issues are sidewalks themselves. And so so when we go through and we take a look at that. We know, I mean, just citywide, we have missing connections throughout the city. And so as as part of this, we probably won't be looking city at every sidewalk in the entire city, but we will be looking at connectivity issues with the existing parks.
Perfect. Yeah, so. Because I would have an example, if you're trying to walk from downtown to the Frylands Park even or any anything in Blueberry Children's Blueberry Park, let's say, you have to be rigid about where you cross, because once you get to a certain spot, there are no crosswalks. And then you'd have to walk all the way up to highway two and cross at Rite Aid and Denny's and come back down, which most people aren't going to think that far ahead and try to cross somewhere else before then. So, yeah, just trying to walk through some of these park areas. The connectivity could be improved. I'm glad we know that.
Yes, yeah, no. And thank you for that comment. That's a, it's a good comment.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Ben. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I'll probably be seeing you here fairly soon.
Look forward to it.
Great. Have a good evening.
Alright. There we have it. Anita. Seven point one. You're back with our multifamily property tax exemption program.
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? I'm wearing a headset as well, hopefully. Okay, good. Yes, as Chair Bull said, I am here to bring back the discussion on multifamily property tax exemption program or MFT. So back in August of twenty twenty two, our intern came to the planning commission and gave a great presentation on the multifamily property tax exemption program. And he gave an introduction and an overview. And so what I did was include the document that he created. So let's see. So it's attachment one considerations and additional summary information. So Liam created this document to basically go through the program. Give you some information on how it works, the financial aspects of it. Considerations as far as benefits to to the city, benefits to developers. And then also gave some examples of other cities that are using this program. So in doing the research for this agenda bill, it was discovered that the city has actually already established residential targeted area. And so so actually, that's that's really good news as far as hopefully, we can get this co drafted a little earlier and get this through the code amendment process. And so I did attach resolution number two thousand nine slash zero one eight. And this is where it established that residential targeted area. That is one of the requirements of RCW three four point one four. And I'm just going to share my screen just for for a minute so I can show you. It is included in your agenda packet, but I did want to just go through that map. So let's see. Okay, so here is, this is from the resolution that is in the packet. So this is a map of the downtown planning area. And this is where it established the urban center. So what we're looking at is the entire downtown planning area. We have in the blue and black checkered outlined area is encompasses the entire downtown planning area. Then we have the different colored areas, which is the different neighborhoods of downtown. And then this blue slashed area that outlines the majority of the of the colored area you see. That is the urban center for residential development. So this is the area of residential targeted area, the area that would be afforded that tax exemption. So going to stop sharing this real quick. Maybe not. I kind of lost you guys. Okay, there we go. So in in researching the resolution, I did find the actual ordinance. So it's ordinance number zero two four slash two zero zero nine. It was adopted on November seventeenth of two thousand nine. And so what this ordinance did was designate portions of the downtown planning area as an urban center. And it also also repealed chapter eighteen point seven four and adopted a revised chapter affordable housing development incentives. So this ordinance was transferred over when we when we adopted the UDR. So it's essentially the same as it was back in two thousand nine. There was some changes to it as far as updating information in there as far as updating the zoning information and updating some chapter numbers in there, but it's essentially essentially the same as as when it was first adopted. So the good news is we already do have affordable housing chapter. And so that is chapter twenty two point five two. And it does reference the RCW that implements the multifamily tax exemption code. But it's general in nature. So what we need to do is revise this chapter so that way it's clear as to what the city's responsibility is, what the developer's responsibility is, how the program is run, how the program is monitored. Also, what affordable housing incentives that we'll be putting in in our code. And also if we're going to allow the eight year, twelve year, or twenty year tax exemption. I'm just going to go back to so the Department of Commerce recently came out with a MFT guidance workbook. So and I did also also attach this to the agenda bill or agenda packet, but it's a great resource. It it's going to give us the information on how we need to develop the program, administer the program, monitor the program. And it also has a model MFT code. So it's not like we have to start from scratch. So there's there's something out there that we can emulate. And then we can, we can add what we need to add. We can take out what we need to take out according to what is relevant to the city of Monroe. There's also some sample forms and materials. So this is something that I'm going to be relying on when I draft the code. I also put a link to the city of St. Homish's code. So they actually passed their MFT ordinance back in twenty nineteen. And it's actually under their finance title of their municipal code. So when we talk about this more, we can determine if we want to put this in our in the finance title, or if we just want to go ahead and revise the current affordable housing chapter. That's something we'll discuss through the process. So kind of next steps in developing this code is my plan is to take this back to planning commission in January or February of next year. The next meeting will most likely be a joint meeting with the Community Human Services Advisory Board. They're really interested in providing input. And we did talk to them when we're going through the Housing Action Plan. As this is one of our strategies in the Housing Action Plan. Another thing that I would like to bring to Planning Commission is I would like to have the program manager for the Alliance for Housing Affordability come do a presentation and talk more about the financial implications for this tax exemption program. So he he worked closely with St. Homish on getting their ordinance passed. So he he's a great resource. And he'll be able to explain any questions that you have regarding that. So that's, that's all that I have to discuss for tonight's meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Oh, we got a question from Liz.
I was just curious, when it comes to putting it in the finance chapter versus where it currently is. Will you or will the various joint meetings and stuff help us to be able to figure out the pros and cons of which chapter we ultimately put it in?
Yes, if, so I kind of wanted to get some thoughts tonight on on where you see that going. If you if you like to see that under the finance chapter or the affordable housing chapter. If we don't decide tonight, yes, I can definitely do a pros and cons matrix to see which what works better, what other cities are doing, and then bring that back to you at our next meeting.
What did the, what are the differences of leaving it where it is versus moving it to finance, I guess?
Technically, finance would be a quicker way to get it through the process. But when I think about it a little bit more, I think maybe we would want to go through the affordable housing chapter part that gives us the opportunity to include planning commission and also the the CHAB board. Because we definitely are definitely interested in providing comments on that.
Yeah, I want to
Technically, oh, sorry. I was just going to say technically, if it just goes through the finance a title, then we can just go directly to city council. So that's just a quicker way to get it through.
So Director Bailey and I have also been discussing this with Anita and our our vision of how we would like to move forward is adopting the base program. Going through the planning commission and the other committee, but once it's approved, putting, because it's a two part. It's a two piece program. You've got the land use requirements, but then you also have a finance component. And the finance component is going to it's going to change over time much more frequently than the land use. And so there's we're kind of hoping there's a way to split that out, the components. So the land use really does stay with the planning commission where it's appropriate under title. Or excuse me, yeah, Title twenty two, the Uniform Development Regulations. But the financial component, the taxation component, go through finance. So it doesn't have to go through so many public hearings and it can be changed and updated more frequently.
Anita, is the member from the Alliance that is coming, or is the Alliance associated or affiliated with Hasko?
Yes, yes, it is.
So they will also understand. So they will also understand the financing part of the development part. Banks are required under the Community Reinvestment Act, CRA. To do their part to help finance certain projects. For underserved communities or lower rent type buildings, right?
Yes, yes. And then we could also, if there's still additional questions regarding the financial side, we can also see if we can have somebody from the assessor's office, from the county assessor's office come talk to us as well.
Okay, and our decision or input and discussion, will it be Planning Commission with, you know, consulting input? Or will there be some kind of discussion with the school district as well? Since, you know, they might be affected in, in a, in a slight way, a moderate way.
Um, I, I haven't thought about that, but yeah, I can definitely include the school district on any conversations that we have any. Planning Commission meetings when we talk about this topic. That's, that's a good idea to have them at least come to the table.
Because it will, you know, hopefully increase their pupil count, right?
Yes.
And it won't be as dramatic as mitigation fees, eliminating mitigation fees. But they might have a, a revenue that is not increasing at the same level as they thought, correct?
Uh.
Their portion of the property tax.
That's, that's a, that's a great question. I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, definitely. We were just, speaking of the Monroe School District, we were just informed that they decreased their impact fees. But we were not given a copy of their capital, six-year capital facilities plan. So the city is still collecting more than what they're asking for. So we've got an interesting challenge. And we are tied because we can only update the comprehensive plan once a year, or it's done with a budget which has already been approved. So we are aware of that situation and trying to find a solution, which is separate from what Anita is working on.
Mitigation fees, though.
The school mitigation fees, which are separate from the multifamily tax exemption program. But we will definitely do our due diligence and come back with an answer for you.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I want to say just this only affects property taxes, but yes, I will definitely find out for you if it affects any school taxes.
Okay.
I have a question. So fine. So can you help me understand? So when I, when we first heard this about this, it sounded like this was a decision that we were gonna have input on whether or not we wanted to. Initiate a tax exemption ordinance. And then now it sounds like we may, what do we already have in effect from two thousand and nine? And why hasn't it worked? Or do we know that? And it sounds like you're already drafting stuff up in expectation that we are moving forward with this. I know some of the affordable housing is required through the comp plan. But if this is the way we're gonna get there or not, are we still discussing that? Or is this, since we already have this two thousand and nine thing, does that make it different? I'm, I feel like before it was just an idea and now it's something we're doing.
Um, yes, so, so I was surprised too that we already did have something in our code regarding the, the M F, M F T E. So, but that is a great question because, like you said, two thousand and nine, has anything, has this program been used since two thousand and nine? I think maybe Housing Hope has, has used this program. That's something that I can, I can get some details for you for the, for the next meeting as well. But, but, but I am curious to find out too, why have, why hasn't this program worked or hasn't been working since two thousand and nine? And then also, since we do have it on the books. It's technically there for developers to use if they want to use it. It's just, there has been updates. As Liam talked, there's been an update in two thousand twenty-one to the RCW. So there's things that we need to change anyways in this code. So. Is there, maybe we can just have a discussion on, because I know, you're right. I know last time we said we, we were gonna decide if we're gonna move forward with this program. And because of the new information that we do, we do have now that there already is something in the code. What would, what would the Planning Commission like to see happen? Are we ready to move forward with the draft code? Or do we need a couple more meetings to discuss on, on what we wanted to do?
Well, I guess for me, since I'm just now like getting my head wrapped around that, okay, there already is something. Yes. The draft code would be good if it's showing the things that we have to incorporate.
Okay.
And a version of talking points about what else could be enhancements with the information of. Since now we don't have a, to look at other cities to say, here's what's, it's been working for them. We have our own information. We should have to say whether or not it's working or not. So.
So I, I would like to add to that. I don't believe the city actually ever used the, the. Provisions that were established in two thousand and nineteen. It's like the building blocks were put in place, but it was more fully implemented. But we'll confirm that with our finance department because it, it, it wouldn't just be Housing Hope. It, it's the city of Monroe is giving tax revenue over an extended period of time. And then it catches up once they are put back a hundred percent on the tax rolls. So I'm almost positive, but we will definitely get back to you before the next meeting on this.
And was that because it just wasn't like advertised, you know?
But this was back in two thousand and nine. And so some of these cities have just like, so home is just implemented in two thousand and nineteen, this kind of tax break situation to increase multifamily. The Rivers Edge, they were able to do it without a tax break. They got sewer hookup. Medication or waived fees. And I think it was almost a million dollars. And you can verify that, but I believe that's what. Ben was Community Development Director. I think that's what the, the total was that they. The benefit they received was through mitigation fees and hooked up fees. Were waived in order to get the affordable housing in that area. And you can verify that, but I don't think they got any sort of tax break. I'm almost a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, the other, the component of that is the state law has changed. And so Anita and I were actually talking about this. Or no, actually Anita and I weren't talking about this. Lance and I were talking about this earlier today. When this program started, it was for the really large cities, Seattle, Tacoma, then Linwood is able, because it was based on population. And the more recent changes really enable cities more like Monroe. So again, I, I want to do our due diligence and go back and see twenty, in two thousand and nine. The pieces were put together, but I do not believe implementation will ever move forward or advance.
And I also want to mention, Randy, that I pull apartment data every quarter. And Monroe is uniquely bad at building multifamily. We are isolated here. So people want to, you know, live near family here or live near work here. They don't have a choice. You know, it's not like the difference between, let's say, South Everett and North Linwood. You can't just find an apartment like that. You have to go to Everett or Woodinville or Bothell or, you know, Sultan. That, that's, it's just a uniquely bad place to try and find an apartment. We have, you know, the last vacancy that I pulled is three, three percent, three point one percent. That means there's not enough apartments. And all the apartments that are available are either two and three bedroom that are about two thousand a month.
Right. And so I guess I have two pop-up questions of spurred, spurred from that. So these waived impact fees for the other apartment complex, how does something like that come then? If there's not a program for it through the tax exemption, is there some other exemption that we have that, that's how they got it? The sewer fees being waived? I mean, we've been talking about how we need more money for everything and then giving up money first doesn't make sense to me.
Sure. I'll do the research on that. I'm too new to know what other programs are in place. But I would look to Jay and I'll. Then, but there are a lot of different programs that municipalities have access to for affordable housing. So I need to figure out what we've already adopted.
Right, because then if they already have that, would they qualify for more than one? Or, you know, do we have enough? And I understand that the multifamily, we don't have enough of it here, but I'm just not sure that giving in tax exemption is the way to get more.
We'll have a lot more information for you at the next meeting.
Yeah, I just want, I just wanted to make a quick comment on the sewer connection fee. So the city does have something in the code that for the, for. Affordable housing developments. And there is, there was a reduction in the sewer connection fee in this, this related to the Rivers Edge project. This is only for downtown commercial area. So it's not, it's not citywide. It's only downtown commercial.
So of the land use map that you showed us, the, that's only. A little portion of it and then the rest is what this is needed for?
So the map that I showed earlier, that's downtown commercial. So that's where the sewer connection fees are permitted. The reduction of sewer connection fees for affordable housing projects.
Right, so that we already have something for the same area that we're talking.
Yes, yes, correct, correct.
And would they qualify for both?
Uh, yes, they would.
Kelsey.
So I was thinking the same thing as Commissioner Blair on who is this affecting for? Like, we have impact fees, but then they're getting waived. Like, who's actually paying for this then? Like, who's, who are these? This budget falling on, are they on just regular people or people just building? I don't know. I'm trying to figure out where you're getting money places, but then waiving it. So. I don't know. Sorry, that's not a direct question, but just trying to figure out who's, who's the budget falling on, on, in the grand scheme of all of it.
Well, in general, a sewer hookup fee, the, the city would charge a sewer hookup fee. To either put that away to increase capacity at some point. Or it would be to immediately start, you know, increasing capacity if the development was so large. That, you know, our solid waste treatment plant wasn't big enough. The situation with Rivers Edge, I believe, was that we had significant excess capacity in our sewage treatment plant. So the fact that they gave up some money. You know, for new sewage treatment plant infrastructure did not necessarily affect them. Because everything was already built. They had capacity. They'll be basically making it up. Because we have a hundred and sixty-six units that are generating revenue on a monthly basis. Because that, you know, that it was so needed that it immediately filled up. It was like three months and then the, the. All the buildings filled up with residents. So it's generating a monthly income to help sustain the solid, solid waste treatment plant. So that's the trade-off.
Taxes. So that's where the budget's getting.
Yeah.
In back into the.
And we're talking about three very different financing tools. So the sewer connection fee is one piece that Jay just explained. The next is the impact fees. And like Ben was talking about, we only have, we have transportation, we have parks. And the school district, we collect on their behalf. We were just a pass through. We don't keep those funds. And so impact fees are treated very differently. And then the multifamily tax exemption, that's talking about property taxes. And so in that instance, I believe in Liam's presentation, the way it was explained. And we will, again, I'm gonna have the experts give you much better information, but the way that it was explained is the. The initial construction has a cost, but it's held, it's frozen for whatever number of years we've agreed to. The, the eight, ten, or was it fifteen, Anita?
Um, eight, twelve, or twenty.
Yeah, so it's, it's frozen for that timeline. So the city doesn't see the benefit of the annual increase. Until it gets to the end of its frozen period. And that loss, if you want to call it, revenue is borne by all who live in Maryland Monroe and pay taxes.
But Anita's documents indicate that property tax revenues is less than fifteen percent of the city's budget. And we're only talking about, I mean, we have eleven hundred units multifamily. In town in total. So the number of units that we're talking about that would get this property tax exemption is not huge. Because we, realistically, I tell Anita this every quarter, right? Every three months. Like an old vinyl. Need ten percent more multifamily units every year. And we're, and we're just not getting there.
This conversation does make me think our finance director will be coming to the Planning Commission. At one of your first meetings next year, kind of talking about financial literacy and the different ways the city is funded. I'm gonna add this if she, see if she'll also address some of these questions. You're hearing it from our finance director as well.
That's really great.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and, yeah, sorry, it's a little confusing about the different mitig, impact fees versus connection fees and things like that. So, so there, the provision in our code that talks about impact fees, so school, transportation and park. So there is a provision that allows eighty percent of a reduction of those fees for low-income units. So if we're talking about this multifamily tax exemption program, only a certain. If it's gonna be a market rate housing apartment building with, with twenty, say, we choose twenty percent. Twenty percent of those apartments are going to be affordable housing units. So only those units would, would be afforded the eighty percent reduction in mitigation fees. Not the other, not the other regular units.
Anita, that was partially my fault that I might.
That's okay. That's okay.
Apologize for not keeping us on track with, with this proposal and presentation tonight. I'm sorry about that.
And I think, and I think when we, we do have the program manager come from, from, from AHA. I think that it's, it's a little more clear on, like you were talking about, what happens to the money? How does it get spread out? The property tax money, how does it get spread out? How does it affect other property owners? So I think that would be a good, good presentation.
This is a really good conversation. So I have no concerns about it segueing. I mean, this is complex information and finances are really important. Because that's how things are paid for in the city of Monroe. So thank you.
So I think in the meantime, I'll start working on the draft code. But it probably will be maybe one or two meetings before I bring that forth to you. Because we still have a lot more information that I'd like to provide you before we kind of make those decisions. And then I also wanted to talk, one, one other thing is, so in the last meeting, we talked about. The eight, twelve, or twenty-year tax exemption and looked like we were moving, we didn't want to offer the eight, the eight-year. Because that doesn't offer any affordable housing unit requirement. So I think we're looking at the twelve and twenty-year. So definitely work on getting that in the code. And then move forward as we have a couple more discussions on this topic.
Any other questions?
I actually have one. Do we know why there's not more multifamily? Or like, is there, do we have research on why this, is it too expensive to build? Or just people aren't interested in doing that or land is too expensive?
It's a compilation. You've got, you have the market demand, but more importantly, Monroe does not have a whole lot of land. That is zoned for multifamily. A lot of it is also in the downtown core. So it's not easily built. You would have to demolish existing homes. You'd have to consolidate lots. And so it's not like green fields where you can just build like up on the hill where the, the single-family homes are being constructed right now.
Wouldn't make sense for a mother.
Well, it, it might. I mean, we need, we need to look at all options, but right now there's, it's a constraint of land supply. And how to develop what's available. I don't, I don't think market is honestly the issue. It's what we have for developers to. Yeah. Thank you, Anita.
Thank you. Thank you.
Looks like we're on to section eight discussion. Well, is this really the section? I thought discussion by commissioner staff was after your section and presentation.
Well, this used to be added in new business, but I don't believe either of these topics really rise to the importance, so I asked.
Apologize for my confusion.
My apologies, I just thought it was more applicable in the discussion. Um, and the first, the first one is just, I want to thank you all for your work this year. You accomplished like ninety percent of the projects we had. Um, on, in, in your packet is included the program of work that you adopted back in May, I want to say, a couple of the items got pushed out. So the downtown commercial zoning code amendments, the twenty nineteen stormwater plan. The current six-year capital facilities plan updating the uni- unified development regulation definitions that actually just got approved by city council. So thank you again for all your work on that. Um, and then I just wanted to also highlight the items that are being integrated to the comprehensive plan process. And there are two items on there that are, um, we will take up after the completion of the comp plan. So uh, job well done and I will be coming back to you in January to figure out what this list is for twenty twenty-three. I'm very hopeful that our comprehensive plan consultant, uh, has established a more detailed calendar, because I know that was of interest for the planning commission and that really should be most of our work next year. So that completes that. Are there any questions?
Probably just the bottom line for us, Kate. Could you assure us commissioners that there will be no coal in our stocking because we did so well this year?
There will be no coal, you did a great job. Oh goodness, okay. And then the next one, I apologize for the late addition. Hannah sent out a very late revised agenda for this evening. I realized, um, Commissioner Bull had been asking, oh, so we're gonna have the the community, community development monthly report and I thought we were putting them in and I was wrong. So in your packet this evening, you have all of our reports going back to May. And some of the things, um, the way they're set up is the first part talks about a project that we're highlighting. So there were a townhouse project, the one for November, December was actually um, completion of a major code enforcement case that the house has actually been completely redone and a new family has recently moved in. Another highlight was we are going through a huge record retentions, uh, record retention program. Part of getting ready for a new city hall is we need to get rid of our paper copies. The other part is once you digitize them, it actually helps the community as well as staff finding old plaques, boundary line adjustments. Um, I won't say building permits because under the retention record, um, after those are once you have occupancy, I can't, it's like a hundred and twenty days, those are supposed to be destroyed. But the bigger projects, you'll have much easier access to them and that's, um, that was, I think, last month's update. From the land use side, it is a compilation of all the projects going on and we've been talking about housing. I just went through all of the project lists, there are a hundred and fifty-three new units being created for projects that are in one form or another. Through the review process, either from a short plot, which is nine or, um, fewer lots in the preliminary stage under civil construction or have been finalized and houses are being constructed. Some of the other highlights, um, that I have not been bringing to you, again, my apologies. Uh, Adventure Sports, their property is on North Lewis, um, it's, let's see here. North of the railroad tracks on the west side, it's gonna be a multi, um, building facility for sales and repair of uh, adventure, or what do you call it, adventure sports, but RVs or not RVs, ATVs. Um, the Sky Valley Food Bank, uh, they did an addition to their, or they were approved for an addition to their building. Monroe Gateway is a RV showroom and storage facility that, uh, is proposed at the very end of West Main Street. There's a coffee stand there at the moment on the south side of Main Street, um, just adjacent to SR five twenty-two. Uh, the Monroe Christian School, they've been working on bringing in a modular classroom. So that's, uh, it has site plan approval, but it doesn't have approval from the building department. The other one is the Lakeview Building, that's the one at Fryland's Boulevard in US two, they've got their foundation now and then looks like they're getting close to putting walls up. Um, ideal option, I know several of you had some questions about this. This is the conditional use permit for a substance abuse medical clinic, outpatient medical clinic that was approved. That's at one oh one East Main Street. It's at Main or Lewis, it's on the corner of Main and Lewis, that was approved. We did not receive any appeals. They are working on their building permit now for some tenant improvements. Um, this is not much county PUD, this project is actually, Anita can answer any questions for you, but this is, um, the project that's on Ternie Place. They're working on construction right now. And then we have two annexations that are in process. Uh, the Connor Annexation is a single parcel that's adjacent to the high school or it's next to the high school property in our southwest urban growth area. The applicants have already gotten through the ten percent petition method and they have returned their sixty percent signature. So the next step is working with the county and then we'll go back to city council to see if they want to finalize that or not. The North forty-one annexation area is our Northwest UGA and, um, these are in your packets, there's a map of a little description of that. It also received ten percent petition approval and the council said, um, with that adoption, they get to move forward in collecting signatures. This one is gonna be a little bit more complex. They need sewer from the city of Monroe. They have water from the Roosevelt, um, Water District. And one of the things that city staff met with, one of the proponents is there are multiple developers, there are forty-one acres, I cannot remember the total number of parcels. But the city does not want it to be, uh, an uncoordinated development. We want it to be phased appropriately. We want to make sure that the road system network makes sense and so we've actually asked the fair, um, the, I think, I want to say it's like four development groups, we want them to work together before they come back to us. We need, we need some kind of a plan, not just to approve the annexation. So that, um, we have not heard back from them, uh, that meeting was over the summer. So I don't have any, any more updates.
Can I have a question about that?
Sure.
Isn't that one of the requirements of the GMA is that sewer and water is already in, uh, to these areas for development?
It's a little murky, but the city of Monroe adopted amendment, an amendment in I was twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. Prior to that, there, the city could extend sewer into an unincorporated urban growth area where we're gonna grow into. Uh, the city had done that and we required, it's called a no protest agreement. So the city would come back and say, alright, it's time for you to annex, you got the utilities you wanted, we want you to develop like uh, what the city wants, not the county. So prior to the code change, and the reason I'm saying it's not, um, cut and dry is there, I want, I, I can't remember and I'm apologizing because it's an area that I was really familiar with and then I stepped away from planning for a while, at least land use. If a, for example, if there was a property in an urban growth area and they were on septic and their septic system was failing and they're, um, adjacent to a municipality that has sewer service. There were, back in the day, and again, I don't know, remember if it was state law or the requirement, but we could be encouraged, forced to provide sewer. I don't know what's happened with that because again, it's been gone for fourteen years. But the mayor, this was a really important to him. So back in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, the city actually passed, uh, an ordinance that says we will not extend sewer unless you annex. So yes and no, and it's complicated when you're a satellite city like Monroe. We are not part of a conglomeration of cities. And so hopefully going forward, we will not be extending sewer until you annex.
Well, I mean, since the goal of GMA is to keep growth where it belongs and then we don't want sprawl, but then we do this and then as soon as that, those are annexed, then the next one that makes it an adjacent property to an annexed and then you have sprawl. When we're trying to infill and look at our zoning for where we can get more people inside the city limits already and we know we're not maxed out with that. And then continuing to grow out because somebody brings it to us, not because we need it.
Yeah, those are, when the city establishes its urban growth area is acknowledging at some point that that area should become part of the city. With that being said, these are all policy decisions that are made by the planning commission's recommendations to city council. And it takes thorough review of what are our targets, what are we being told that we need to accommodate? So I agree with everything you said, but it's complicated.
You just, it's like we hear this thing where it's already the, we already have a, a ordinance saying we won't do this and then, and then we're doing it. So like it just seems like that's a lot of the theme.
Well, for, for North forty-one, in order for them to develop on sewer at city densities, they will have to annex. They don't get sewer, um, because our city changed our rules. It was important again to the current administration that we will not extend sewer. So, but that area is in the city's urban growth area and it is identified for our needs as we grow years out.
And wouldn't we rather have it annexed in so the city has, you know, provides direction on how it's developed rather than
Definitely.
Let it be developed by the county. The county is the, you know, they're, they don't have any, any problem with sprawl. Right? So.
So here, what we're saying is since we're forcing the annexation, that is why that ordinance in the past that the mayor wanted is important. Because without that, they could be still doing this, but through the county and we wouldn't have oversight of what they were, making them coordinate their plan and all that.
Yeah, and our urban growth area development there, it's a really complex issue because the, the county has certain property owners have certain rights. And so when I was here previously, there was a plat that was approved, it was, it was only a handful of lots. But they were put on septic systems and you don't want that either because it's where the city expects to grow. And we want things to happen this, the way this city wants. And so, I think where Monroe is today is a much better place and it does encourage the developers to coordinate before the city would accept the annexation. The counter to that is the development that's occurring north, uh, of the, of the farm. The city, this is before the, our regulations changed, the city extended sewer, there's a huge subdivision that's going in. It's not following our regulations, it's following the codes.
The county.
In reverse, we would really want to annex before subdivisions are approved.
So this new one should be better. I hope so, yes.
And when you say coordinate, like roads coordinate, that means it has an exit, it doesn't, you don't go in and you're not able to get out, except where the entrance is.
Yes, um, well, we, um, again, back over, over the summer, we did meet with one of the developer groups and we were very clear with them that as you're thinking of development of this area, not only do we want you to figure out a thoughtful road network, but we also want you to figure out or think about how that area is gonna connect to the city, because right now they're gonna have to go through Robin Hood, come down a hundred and seventy-ninth and so or go back out, um, to Roosevelt Road. So we want them to be thinking about these connections because once the city takes it on, like Ben was talking about with parks, we have to maintain it. So it's really important to us that they're, they're being thoughtful on how they're designing future development. And so that's all I have for you. Any questions on the developments?
Thank you for all the, uh, all the information on the developments, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Good stuff. It helps us because people ask, what's going on?
Yeah. Yeah, and like I said earlier, before the meeting started, Hannah and I have this figured out now. You will be getting them on a monthly basis.
On to the rest of the discussion, shall we? Okay, thanks Kate, appreciate it. Start with, um, our Zoom folks. Liz, do you have anything for us this evening?
Um, not much, just economic development last week was pretty good. We're, they were really great and excited to hear that we're talking about land uses. I was like, yeah, it was great times. Um, but they were, we were talking about the city's new branding and all that good stuff. Uh, this business surveys are gonna be coming out. Um, I guess it's been coming up a lot about, there's a lot of feedback coming from business owners about wanting streamlining and permit processing. That's all I got on that one, so I'm not quite sure what more. I, I don't know outside of that, I was like, take that back to planning, I don't know what I do with that, so. Uh, anyways, but it was a good meeting, so we're working on our budget for the next couple of years and subcommittees and all that stuff. We also have new members, so, but it was good, that's all I got.
Liz? So permits, so they mean building permits?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'll ask Lance, I know he attends those meetings.
Awesome. Anita?
Well, since this is our last meeting of the year, I just wanted to thank everyone for their work and for volunteering your time. It's, um, you know, it's just great that you're involved with the community and you're helping us make decisions. Um, and also just wanted to say happy holidays and happy new year and looking forward to, to working with you next year.
Great, thank you very much.
I also wanted to say thank you. This has been very informative last couple of months and I'm still excited to help, but, um, need to learn more on everything, but, uh, thank you guys, your presentations are amazing, really look up to you both, Anita and Kate. And so, thank you for all your hard work.
Awesome.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for, um, just everything, breaking it down. I'm new, I haven't been here too long, but just sitting back and just listening and taking everything in and then I love it when you break it down into like new commissioner terms. Right, um, so, because I haven't been here for a long time, so, um, I'm looking forward to next year and just serving and getting to learn more and so I appreciate everyone. Happy holidays and winter break starts next week for the school district, looking forward to that.
Okay, you Hannah, you're amazing, you're so amazing, so thank you for everything you've done.
Right. Uh, I want to say that Kelsey, uh, her term does end this year, but she had reapplied and she was, um, reapproved last council meeting, so that's a go. We'll all be on the same team again for one more year. Yeah, no changes to the planning commission would be a good idea for a little while. Um, yeah, I'm glad you said we have done so much because sometimes it feels like there's more to do and so it feels validating that you, that from your guys' perspective, we got some stuff done. And even the stuff that's on hold and, and whatnot, it's, I know we discussed all of that and so it's, it's somewhere in the process. Um, I just wanted to mention, I'm not sure if anyone's been paying attention to zoning stuff that's going through city council right now with the airport property. Um, I just want to use this as a example for us to be careful with what we do, uh, here in changing things, uh, the definition for the tourist commercial zoning was a great idea. We'd like to see touristy things there. Um, the wording wasn't quite concrete enough to not exclude certain uses. So, um, the property owners now feel that a sale is being thwarted because we're now trying to change the definition. Um, so what we, what we do, like those definitions that we went through so much and what the code uh, amendments that we might end up implementing after the comp plan, it's just it's just really important that we're getting it right the first time because trying to fix your mistake afterwards can look retaliatory or like you're picking on a certain area. So be careful. And the people involved are now, you know, longtime residents. They're upset. It's not what we want out of the situation at all. So. And I hope everyone has a nice Christmas-ish holiday break and see you all back next year.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the new commissioners in 2022. Thank you to all the new staff in 2022. And it's just going to be good to have a cohesive unit, sleeves rolled up to grind through this comprehensive plan. And Randy, it does seem glacial sometimes, but it's a process and it's a well thought out. It's, it's kind of like a machine and it just chugs along. And sometimes it feels like you spent two hours and you don't know if you accomplished anything, but eventually it chugs its way through the snake, gets to city council, gets approved and on we go, right? It's, it's not like regular business where, you know, you're the CEO. You make a decision, off you go. This is, everybody has input. Everybody has to be recognized. It's a process and you just have to know it's a process. So it's just going to seem slow sometimes, but that's just the way it is. And again, that's a good reminder, your reminder to us, be thoughtful always. That's why sometime it is slow because you have to, you have seven commissioners and very experienced staff telling you, here's all the repercussions if you make a quick decision, right? So you try and think of everything. I know the airport property is super unique and we were super constrained about, you know, how we could word it because it is, you know, a unique property. It's not like, you know, the downtown commercials on this. So, I mean, it was just hard. But happy holidays to everyone and I appreciate everyone's work. Thank you. Kate?
So I do want to actually touch on the tourist commercial situation that's going on. The city council took emergency action on October 25th, adopting interim regulations that removed all of the government facility uses for that zone. And it's not applicable to one property. It's applicable to the entire tourist commercial zone, which is very unique. It is on both sides of the fairgrounds. There's about 27 total parcels. And so depending on, there was a public hearing on December 6th. It was continued to tomorrow night. Depending on what the council decides, you will be getting this project in January because it's an interim ordinance or interim regulations. It's just like the downtown commercial project. It has a six-month timeframe. At any time, the council could choose to repeal it, in which case it goes away to the way it was. Or you continue on your work. You hit about six months. You're like, we don't have enough time. We need more conversation. And we go back to the council and say, we need a six-month extension. So tomorrow evening's council meeting might be an interesting one to watch. Either way, we will be updating you. Trying to think if there's anything. Oh, so on that, the council in, back in October, considered three different options. And it's, they looked at our moratorium, which was really the most restrictive. And they decided that that was not the way to go because it would really impact any property, including the airport for development. We would not accept any building permits. The second option that they considered was what they went with, which is removing the government facility land uses from the code. And the final option was looking specifically at outdoor storage. I'm, I'm actually kind of hopeful that they do give it to the planning commission because there are other uses that I believe you need to reassess. This, the tourist commercial zoning district was adopted in 2019 when you adopted uniform development regulations. It was a lot of information, kind of fire hose coming to the planning commission and city council. That was again, why Anita worked on the definitions earlier this year. It's also why we worked on the downtown commercial. So, and I think Ben has said too many times, the UDR is like a new engine in a car. You're going to have to run it a while to figure out how it needs to be fine tuned. To me, this is another one of those issues. So we'll see what the council decides and it could be on your program of work next year. Other than that, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and hopefully it doesn't snow next week. And it's been a pleasure working with you. I'm very excited about next year.
Thanks, Kate.
Well, I just want to thank Kate for jinxing us by saying the word snow. Um, I do have something for everyone tonight on behalf of Jody, our city clerk. Senator Brad Hawkins, the 12th district is going to be here hosting sort of like a town hall. I think he has a presentation and then there'll be a Q and A. That's going to be Friday, December 30th from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM. So when we have more information on what the discussions will be about, I'll be routing it your way. But yeah, otherwise, thank you all so much for a great year. Coming up on one year with the city, one year with you guys. So it's been a really great learning experience. I take away a lot from our meetings. Thanks for your patience.
Thanks, Hannah. Very nice.
That's all I've got for you.
That's all?
Yep.
I think we're good then. Jerry, anything from IT?
No, thanks for, thanks for having me and see you guys in a year.
Right on. Anyone like to move for a German? Thanks, Kelsey.
I'll second that.
It's Brandy. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Thanks very much.